Good evening. We called to order the regular meeting of West Valley City Council. We note that all council members are present here in our meeting. We're starting just a couple of minutes late. We've had some vigorous discussion in our study meeting just before, and if you missed that, it's your loss. Everything we discuss is so exciting, as you will discover here. So with that, then, we'll begin with our opening ceremony. Councilmember Lars Nordfeld has a treat for us.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to turn the time over to a special visitor we have from London. And it's all yours.
She's on her way now. Should be here also.
She's flying in, maybe. The winds have changed.
Yes, the winds did just change, but they're changing right now.
Oh, here she is.
(singing) Let's go fly a kite up to the highest height. Let's go fly a kite and send it soaring up through the atmosphere, up where the air is clear. Let's go fly a kite.[88.88][88.88](applause)
It's June 14th through the 22nd.
Excuse me, why don't you come up the microphone? We could actually hear you. When you're not using your singing voice, and we can't hear you.
I'm quite quiet. It's June 14th through the 22nd. It's at the West Valley Cultural Center. We have a wonderful director, and choreographer, producer. And so it's been such a great experience for us, and we would love for all of you to come and enjoy it.
Thank you.
Very welcome. Thank you for letting us put this on your table.
Thank you, Mary. Now go to rehearsals.
Thank you.
Those that are here, more information will be back on this table.
Councilman Nordfeld, did you have any other words you wanted to share?
Nope, that's it.
How about a second verse?
Yes, go ahead. Andrew will do the second verse.
Certainly, this is a production that we have the opportunity to have, and it's one that we... It's not the same every year, but the city does put on a plan to cultural celebration center each year, and they have been great productions. So if you haven't seen it, or haven't attended in the past, they've been great. Very well done, and looking forward to this one. So encourage all of you to participate. With that, then, we'll do special recognitions. It looks like there aren't any. The council helps me if I miss any around the corners. Then we go to our minutes of May 22nd. A motion from the council on our minutes.
Motion to approve the minutes of May 22nd?
Property force, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Passes unanimously, the minutes are approved. Next, we have our Employee of the Month Award, and we'll turn to Councilmember Don Christensen for that.
Thank you, Mayor. Our June Employee of the Month is Gene Smith in the Public Works Department. So Gene, would you like to stand up so we know who we're trying to talk about here? Let me read you the nomination. He was nominated by Amanda Bennett from the Police Department. On April 6th, 2018, we encountered a situation in which we needed to collect the water and any other contents present from a storm drain as part of an ongoing police investigation. This was an unusual circumstance, and we were unsure of how best to proceed. The Public Works Department was contacted for assistance, and Gene Smith arrived with the equipment we needed. Gene responded to our location quickly, and was extremely helpful in discussing our options for collecting and transporting the potential items of evidence. In this situation, Gene exemplified an attitude of total customer service and further demonstrated the teamwork among departments that West Valley City continually prides itself upon. I would like to extend my personal gratitude to Gene for his willingness to apply his skills and knowledge to assist us that day with a highly unusual situation. Thank you. George, hang on here just a minute. There's your letter. Here's a letter from the City Council, and we have a city manager congratulating you. There's a little thing on the back, too, don't lose that. Here's your certificate of recognition. And just in case you haven't got anything to... And then also...
Right here, this thing.
Oh, yeah. I see a few of them. All right, Gene, just hold out and show it to me, and we'll get a group photo real quick. And you have to shake hands with everybody. All right.
Thank you.
Gene, it looks like you've got a whole row there beside you. Would you like to introduce who came here to support you?
This is my wife, Laura. And then our real good friends, they live here in West Valley City. Rod, their son Lyle, Amanda, and then you guys know my boss.
Thank you, and congratulations.
All right, next, then, we have our comment period for the public. And I don't know, we may have a... I'm not sure I recognize all the names here. But up to five minutes, it's not a debate, it's not a question and answer period. It's comments and directed to the mayor. And so we have four people who have signed up, and if others want to speak... By the way, Gene, if you want to stay in your family, it's okay, but it's not a requirement. And also, for those four who signed up, some of them, I'm sure, are not here for the public hearing on the budget. If you are, we'll do that separately, okay? So with that, then, let's go down the list. Ken Christopher.
We were just here to find out about the speed bumps, sir.
Yeah. Speed bumps. What... Okay.
You didn't get around discussing it today. So we'll come back next time.
Yeah, and sorry, we... It has to be specific, the way the public comment works. And that's not because of you, but it's because if we don't have a controlled process, there are groups who come in and are very disruptive. So we have to treat everyone exactly the same. So I would say that our agenda in study meeting was cut short. We ran out of time. And so, as you heard there, some of those items will be moved to two weeks from tonight, some from one week from tonight. So just make sure that you check our agenda.
Darren Blanchard, I live at 2809 South Brickson Way in the Highbury community. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. I just wanted to take a minute of your time to say thank you and to pass along an apology to the planning committee. I think I took about 15 minutes of their time two weeks ago and didn't realize it was going to be an unanimous vote. So I apologize for... I feel like I wasted some people's time. But I wanted to thank them for voting and giving a voice to the citizens like myself and to help us in that motion to deny the change in that plot of land. And I just wanted to say, I hope that we can continue this path of doing the right thing. And I hope that if that vote has an appeal or anything from Garbet Homes, that the City Council can continue to do the work that the planning committee has done to vote that down. We appreciate the efforts that you guys have done. I do want to say that we fought that fight, and I think we've had a pretty good outcome so far, but we still have a few other battles left. Parking with the Pinnacle Highbury Apartments is still a big issue for us, and I think that's going to be our focus continuing on here. It's still a big problem, and we would like to have something worked out, either with the Pinnacle Highbury Apartments or if there's something that the city can do to help the residents of the single-family homes in the Highbury HOA community there. I think that's all I have, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Matt McPherson, 2943 South Septon, also in the Highbury community. Just wanted to go up and continue on with what Darren's saying, is that we are very happy that we're proceeding forward with the no zoning change. And we are working currently with Garbet and with the city manager's office to try to come up with some options that'll work for our community as well. Our problem right now still remains that parking issue. Being on the board for the HOA, for that community, I have been contacted probably in the last month, between four and five times a day, about parking problems in our area. It's not an issue that's going away. It's not an issue that's getting any better. Certainly, an issue that won't get worse because of the denial from the planning and zoning for that area, which we're very happy about. But we have to move on to the next part of our problem, which is the parking issue. And all we're really asking for is that the primary roads that are most affected, which are Brickson and Dartford, and to some degree Red Bridge, that they just not be parking lots from surrounding... from Pinnacle, basically. There has been a stepped-up enforcement from the Police Department on the existing no-parking signs, and that has been very, very effective. Cut down dramatically in the amount of cars that are parked illegally right now on Highbury Parkway, blocking the entryways into our neighborhood, parking in front of fire hydrants, blocking intersections. That has dropped off dramatically since that enforcement was stepped up primarily by my clients. And we're very happy about that. So we know that that enforcement works, and we're just asking for additional help in getting, you know, some sort of solution for our community, whether it be no parking at all, or timed parking limits on those roads, or just simple enforcement of the existing statutes when it comes to parking on bridges or other areas. Otherwise, our community, regardless of all the drawbacks, they are prepared at this point to try to privatize, if we can, and do anything to get rid of this issue, which most of us don't want. But I've got residents that have been telling me for weeks now that they've already purchased signs, and they're going to put them in front of their house, and they don't care what the city says. Or they're going to paint those curbs, you know, red. And that's kind of the nicest things that they're probably going to do in that area. And we don't want to continue to exacerbate this problem, make it worse, but our homeowners are dealing with, I think, an issue that has been grinding on them for years in many cases. But as Pinnacles, occupancy has filled up, and that parking issue has just gotten worse and worse. And then, of course, with the enforcement of the parking... The no-parking zones and the zones, it has restricted the amount of parking area that they have been in. And most of them are just using our neighborhood to fill that gap. And it's just not acceptable to us. I can't imagine that any one of you would find that acceptable either. And so I'm hoping that we can find some sort of quick resolution. I realize that this is not a quick process, and we've been at this now for a couple of months, and we're going to continue at it. Anything that we can do... I'm concerned about the fact that we're always last on the agenda, and we tend to get bumped when that comes up. But I understand that there are pressing needs that the city needs to get to. But please, don't make this a low priority issue. I hope that you will see that it's a very big priority issue to us. And if we need to keep bringing the entire community out here rather than just a couple of us, we can do that. And we'd rather not fill up your time with our complaints, though. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here for just regular public comment? Parking, and that was on our agenda, and there are issues there, and there are things that are being worked on. And so that one, though, will be two weeks. The Winchester will be one week. And so, yes, we had an aggressive agenda. We had a lot on it in our study meeting, and so... But we couldn't continue it here, because we had to have it on our agenda. Then with that, the public comment part. Now to our city manager. Any comments you want to add?
No, thanks, Mayor. I'm good.
To the council, any additional comments? And on this, because parking is on our agenda anyway, we won't add any more, because that will be covered in there. Okay, now we go to the next item on our agenda, item eight. This is to accept public input regarding reopening the fiscal year 2017-2018 budget and consider ordinance 18-19 to amend our budget for our current fiscal year and reflect changes in the budget from increased revenues and some additional disbursement of funds. Now, one might say, your budget ends at the end of June. Why are you going and adjusting your budget? Because we have a strict state auditor, is one reason. And so we have to make sure we get things correct. And as well, there are a number of things that happened that we wanted to include in this year. And so let me get down to... There it is. And there are some notes that cover all of the changes in the budget. We have a grant, for example, that we needed to include. We can't always predict the timing on those. Then there are a lot of other items in conjunction with leases, with our fire stations. And those are some of the big ones. Reimbursement on overtime in both our police and fire departments. So we just make those changes. They're really not any new items that, other than very minor ones, that we haven't discussed in great detail before. So these are not like surprises to us. There were a couple of small ones that were new. But those, when we say small ones, like $249 or $1,000. These that were $1,008,000, or $368,000, $2,158,000, those are ones that we have been discussing and are aware of, and we're just adjusting the budget for those. I think that pretty accurately reflects that. Anything, Wayne, you would like to add?
No, sir. I think it's adequate. Thank you.
And so, with that, I declare open the public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak to this? Oh, surprise. And because it is, most of us not new, why not too much concern out to the public? With that, then, I'll close the public hearing portion. Bring it back to the council.
Mayor, I would like to comment and thank the Finance Department for the footnotes. Those explanations were very helpful this time. And with that, I would like to move for approval of ordinance 18-19.
Second to complement and the motion. Property force, any further comments? Very good, then. With that, to our city recorder for the official vote by roll call.
Councilman Piti Smahnu. Councilwoman Link. Councilman Beeler. Councilman Hume. Councilman Christensen. Councilman Nordfeld. And Mayor Bigelow. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next on our agenda are resolutions. Item nine misses Resolution 18-76 to authorize West Valley City to purchase four vehicles from Young Ford for use by the Police Department. This will be two Ford F-150s, one Police Interceptor SUV, and one Police Interceptor sedan. They replace existing vehicles. And the cost will be $117,814, but not to exceed $120,000. And these are fairly routine. We replace vehicles on a regular basis, so there's not too much unusual here. With that introduction, to the council.
Mayor, move for approval of Resolution 18-76.
Second. Property force, any further comments? Then to our city recorder.
Councilman Nordfeld. Councilman Christensen. Councilman Hume. Councilman Beeler. Councilwoman Link. Councilman Piti Smahnu. And Mayor Bigelow. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We only have one item on our consent agenda, but that just highlights that it's a fairly routine one. Resolution 18-77, right-of-way contract with Leonides, Rueda, Moreno, Fernando Torres Cruz, and Elena Torres to accept a temporary construction easement. This is property on 6400 West. 3893 South is in conjunction with the bridge project that we're doing there. So fairly routine. And that's all I'll say on it, to the council. Move for approval of the consent agenda?
Second.
Any further discussions? Seeing none, to our city recorder for the vote.
Councilman Piti Smahnu. Councilwoman Link. Councilman Beeler. Councilman Hume. Councilman Christensen. Councilman Nordfeld. And Mayor Bigelow. Motion passes unanimously.
That concludes our regular city agenda. Please note that there are three more meetings. They should be fairly brief, but those will immediately follow this. But our regular city council meeting, let's close it with a motion. All in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, say no. It passes unanimously. The regular city council meeting is adjourned.
I call to order the regular meeting of our Redevelopment Agency. Note that we've had an opening ceremony, and that all members are present. The next item on our agenda is the minutes from May 1st to the agency.
Mr. Chairman, move for approval of the minutes?
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Any report from our chief executive officer?
No, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Pile, will you please introduce the action item that we're having a public hearing on?
Absolutely. Thank you, sir. So we are considering adoption for the upcoming fiscal year of the budget of the Redevelopment Agency of West Valley City. A tentative budget was adopted in early May. No changes have been proposed since that time to this budget. The budget covers approximately 16, what we call, project areas across the city. I may be wrong on that up one or down one, but around 16 of those project areas. This is a very important part of the city's operations in terms of economic development, both retention and recruitment, and sustainability over time. So that, sir, I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you. All right, we turn to the public to give your opportunity to give us input regarding this budget for 2018-2019. Is there anyone here to speak to this item? Seeing none. We'll close the public hearing and turn this over to the agency.
Given that there were no changes to the tentative budget, I make a motion to adopt Resolution 18-03.
Second. Thank you. We have a motion and a second to adopt this resolution. Any discussion? Turn to our secretary for the vote, then.
Mr. Piti Smahnu. Ms. Link. Mr. Beeler. Mr. Hume. Mr. Bigelow. Mr. Christensen. And Chairman Nordfeld. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. One more item on our agenda? Motion to adjourn. All in favor, please say aye. Unanimous, we're adjourned. Move... Call to order the regular meeting of the Housing Authority of West Valley City. We've had an opening ceremony and roll call. All members are present. First item of the business is the approval of minutes of May 1st, 2018.
I approve for approval of seven minutes.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye. Report from the executive director?
None, sir. Thank you.
Okay, would you like to introduce the public hearing that we have tonight?
Yes, sir. So the Housing Authority budget, much like the RDA budget that was just adopted, is up for consideration for its final approval for the upcoming fiscal year. The Housing Authority for West Valley City accomplishes Program ABES, which is fairly obvious by the title. It has about a $3.5 million overall budget, of which almost $3.2 million, a little under that, of that is passed through of federal funds for housing aid vouchers. Again, like the other budget, there were no changes since the tentative budget was adopted in May, sir.
Thank you. With that, I'll open the public input part of the meeting. Anyone who would like to speak to the Housing Authority budget? Everybody's jumping up at once. We'll close the public input and turn it to the authority.
Mr. Chairman, move for approval of Resolution 18-02.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Ms. King?
Mr. Nordfeld. Mr. Bigelow. Mr. Hume. Mr. Beeler. Ms. Link. Mr. Piti Smahnu. And Chairman Christensen. Motion passes unanimously.
Motion to adjourn. Thank you. All in favor? I just want to get to the next meeting, the one we've all been waiting for. About to order the regular meeting of the Building Authority. Note that we've had an opening ceremony, and all members are present. We have the minutes of May 1st, 2018, for your consideration. Move to approve the minutes?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye. Any opposed? The minutes are approved unanimously. Mr. Pile, any report?
No, sir. Thank you.
Now, would you please introduce the budget for the Building Authority?
Yes, and this is the final of the three budgets that we're considering for final approval for the new fiscal year next year. The Building Authority's sole purpose in existence is to handle the construction and debt service of various buildings specific throughout the city that we've either built or are building in the current years or past years. The only actual expenditure this year is $63,157, which is for some capital projects over at the Maverick Center, which I believe are out of the repair and replacement fund. All of the other monies that are passing through the budget here, which are some $3.5 million, are transfers in and then transfers back out for expenditure on debt service funds or the like.
Okay, thank you. Now, open the public hearing to accept public input regarding the fiscal year 2018-2019 budget. And I'll close the public hearing and bring the matter back to this body for discussion or a motion. Move for approval of resolution eighteen dash zero-two.
Second.
We have a motion properly before us with no discussion. Let's call for the vote.
Mr. Pitius Manu.
Aye.
Ms. Link.
Yes.
Mr. Hume.
Aye.
Mr. Bigelow.
Aye.
Mr. Norfeld.
Yes.
Mr. Christensen.
Yes.
And Chairman Buehler.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
A motion to adjourn will be appropriated this time. We have most to adjourn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.